This is a special meeting of the council of the township of Montclair and is being broadcast live on channel 34 and is streaming live on Montclair TV 34 YouTube channel. It is available on demand and can will be rebroadcast. This special meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided transmitted to the official newspapers on October 13, 2023, posted on the bulletin boards outside the municipal building and has remained continuously posted. In addition, a copy of the special meeting notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the township clerk. With that, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
With that, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Cummings?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Present.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Present.
Counselor Russo?
Present.
Counselor Schlegel?
Here.
Mayor Spiller?
Present. Next, we're going to open up to public comment. All speakers must complete the sign-in sheet before addressing the council. And please state your name clearly before speaking. And with that, I'll open public comment.
Again, good morning, council. William Scott, 23 Cedar Avenue, a resident of Montclair for 74 years. I support Dr. Baskerville for this vacant position. Dr. Baskerville has been a community service for many, many years, a lifelong servant of this community. She served on the planning board, Board of Education, and many other committees. Served the 4th Ward as 4th Ward Council Representative for 12 years. Supported the Housing Commission as the liaison for the Housing Commission for over 16 years. She supported the Parks and Recreation Committee for over 16 years as the liaison. She was a member, excuse me, she was a liaison for the, some of the council members may not know this particular committee, the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee that was disbanded over eight years ago. I understand that now there's a new zero tolerance committee, but the purpose of the Traffic and Parking Committee, which was also supervised by the Parking Authority in the Montclair Police Department, really had a pretty good handle on what the parking issues were in the township. But again, Dr. Baskerville served on that committee as the township liaison. She introduced the first rent control ordinance in the township of Montclair. That ordinance that she introduced had 90% of the regulations that are in that rent control ordinance now. That ordinance was not moved forward, unfortunately, because at the time, there was Mayor Spiller's platform that moved his version of the rent control ordinance forward and Dr. Baskerville's ordinance was not moved forward. Over the, let's see. He's held over 50 community meetings in her time as the 4th Board Representative of the Township.
Mr. Scott, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Baskerville is an African-American woman, served this community with pride and commitment, and she should absolutely be assigned this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you.
I guess it's one minute because I have to wait.
No.
Hi. My name's Nicole Farjani. I don't often come before you. I sometimes write to you. I would like to talk today briefly about what's happening in the world. I'd like to thank you for taking down one of the Israeli flags that was flying on the township pole. I would like to know what the township has to do to also take down the one from Anthropology. I was trying to find the numbers of how many people have been killed in the Middle East, but the numbers are different according to different news sites. But so far, 4,200 have been killed in Gaza, 1,400 have been killed in Israel, 1 million people have been displaced, and we have a humanitarian crisis on our hands. And I have written to you just to ask you to please be fair and to keep all Montclair people in your hearts. We have people in our community that don't feel safe walking the streets. I sat in silent protest on Sunday for seven hours with a Palestinian flag, and I was attacked by many people. I didn't expect it, honestly, in our town. I just didn't. And then I had people that are of Arab descent, Iraqi, Palestinian. I didn't even know they owned shops in this town, and they came and sat with me. And they expressed to me that they don't feel safe. So I would like you to just keep in mind and please keep the people in mind of Montclair, just to keep them safe during this horrible, horrible time. And I have 20 seconds left. I don't do this usually, but I am fully endorsing Renee Baskerville to be seated up here, and that is because it's simple. We don't have an African-American woman sitting on this board right now. And that voice needs to be heard, and no offense to anybody else who's up for this, but that's the voice that's missing. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just say specific to that, we certainly, you know, are the first ones to pray for peace and certainly here in Montclair, ensure everyone is safe and feels safe. That is what this community is all about. Specifically to answer your question, we don't have any control over flags on private property, which was one of your questions. Anyone else?
Hi there. Eric Demotta, 25 Norwood Avenue in the 1st Ward. I am here today watching a small group of political insiders decide among themselves who is going to sit in a chair that is normally reserved for somebody elected by voters. Unfortunately, this is not unusual, and in fact, it's not the first time this year it's happened to local voters. The ballot in next month's state legislative elections was subject to an almost comically underhanded series of maneuvers to make sure the right butts ended up in the right seats, regardless of what primary voters actually wanted and voted for. I fear a similar thing may be happening here. Now, clearly, Councilor Yakabelis vacated his seat in part because of reasons that have nothing to do with our ongoing game of political musical chairs. But just because he was wobbly does not mean he wasn't also given a push. I was once standing with him when he got a push on the phone. I won't go farther. With our next council election just a couple hundred days away, voters should be asking themselves two questions. First, whose butts are now being primed by the political pros for seats on this body? And second, to what lengths are the politicos willing to go to make sure that more civic-minded butts are kept away from these seats, not least the one our departed councillor was running for before he discovered that running for mayor of Montclair was actually a super bad idea? You may be wondering what all this has to do with small-town democracy, and I'd say the answer is absolutely nothing.
Hi. I'm Christina Thomas, and I've been a Montclair resident for more than 50 years. I own property and an 11-unit apartment building and care deeply about this town. I've been really upset by the clandestine behind-the-scenes maneuvering that's been par for the course for this council. At some point, it's subtle, like right now, not telling us before the meeting who the potential candidates are to fill Peter Yakabelis's seat. The town deserves transparency and adherence to the law, not only to the Open Public Meetings Act, but also to the Open Public Records Act. Straw polls and after midnight maneuverings need to stop. Statutes and appellate division cases need to be adhered to. The laws are not optional. They're required. Lest anyone mistakenly believe that I ever just get up here without first warning all the councillors and telling the ladies and gentlemen, I want every member of the public to know that before I say anything, I always try to educate the council about the law. And I welcome their arguments and explanations, but most of them choose to say nothing. Robin has said, "Thanks, this is a lot to think about," and David has taken the time to explain his positions, and Bob often says that he shares the same concerns. Now, all of you, except for Bob, are facing some issues. And you know who isn't, even though she was serving on the council at the same time as you? Renee Baskerville. She would ensure a seamless transition, and she doesn't have any of the conflicts that Roger Terry does. He has been a consultant for the schools for this year, and it's the appearance of impropriety that's an issue again. Renee served with a lot of you and did a good job. And if she's running for mayor again, then it would be good for us to see what she does in the future. Thank you for your time.
Hi. Carmel Lockman. This is, what I want to talk about is related, but it's not exactly on topic, but it is related. So I listened to, I was away, so I didn't attend the meeting where you discussed Lackawanna Plaza, but I listened to the entire presentation yesterday. And I must tell you, I was really disappointed in the people in the council. It seemed like so many residents asked the question, "Why are you disregarding what the planning board had to say?" That was never answered. And the tone of the meeting throughout was very dismissive of the planning board's work. You might want to listen to Mr. Russo's total put-down of the planning board at meeting minutes 5103. And then he, you know, said, "We were not people of experience," or, "Yes, you did, Mr. Russo. I'm very sorry."
I said, "You're not experts."
"We're not experts." Well, I can tell you personally, being seven years on the board, I've attended at least 168 meetings of the planning board, looked at a variety of applications, spent hours looking at these applications, particularly the big ones like Lackawanna Plaza. I also, we all sit on a variety of subcommittees. So each of us are experts, I believe, in, that we've learned through the time on the board, how to look at an application, how to evaluate it, how to do the best for the community. We've gained lots of experience, and I would call us experts at this point. No one, except for Lori, thanked us for all the work that we've done. Mr. Spiller thanked Janice Tally, Mr. Hughes, Iris Smith, which are all paid consultants. The people on the planning board are not paid, and yet we do hours of work. You know, Robin, you've been on the board. We have no political ambitions, unlike perhaps some of you. We just want to serve the community.
You did run for office.
Pardon me?
You did run for office.
I have no, I'm telling you now, I have no political ambition. I did run for office.
That's if you'd like to conclude.
All right. Sorry. Just one more thing. I think you were misled and you gave incorrect information by your general counsel as well. So you might want to look at his response to Mr. Herlock's question about disregarding the planning board's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, real quick, thank you for acknowledging that, Carmel, at the end. I did, I did, just so that we're on the same page, and you can go back and listen, I did question the township attorney on that.
I think you gave him a sweetie.
And that's fine. I'm not getting into that with you now. I'm just saying about your first, your earlier comment was that we were all pretty quiet up here, and we were just going along and bashing the planning board, for lack of a better word. Not me. I asked. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to clarify. I didn't come here to discuss these things, but Carmel, the person who recommended you to the planning board was me, and I recommended you to the planning board right before you ran for council with the objection of most of my colleagues thinking you were going to be a candidate. I said, "She does an excellent job on the planning board, wants to continue serving," and I recommended you. I also recommended your name as one of the possible people to fill this spot. So to say I, I didn't say that about the planning board. I said, "People come up here and think the mayor appointed the whole planning board," and they said, "They're the experts. We should listen to the experts." Expertise is something, but "all experts" is not true. You have experience, you do a good job. I resent being, you know, accused of something I didn't say, but I always try to acknowledge. I did acknowledge the planning board's input. I served on the planning board. When I was mayor, I was on the planning board. So I'd just like to say to you, when you say we have political ambitions, you don't. You've been a candidate, you seem to be interested in running again, you work with the legal women voters, which I've been a member of 30 years. Do not characterize something that I or my colleagues say incorrectly. Thank you.
Just as a note, it's good news for you. You were appointed unanimously by the council to the position, so we supported you. Any other public comment?
Kathleen Bennett, resident here over 40 years. I am the chairperson of the HPC. I'm here to support what Carmel said. I was in attendance, I've been at all the attendants for all the meetings, and I was here at the last Lackawanna meeting. And actually, it was a surprise. I have to say that on the HPC, which are appointed by you, Sean, we have people, we have three registered architects, we have two, we have one lawyer, we have a retired lawyer. I have three degrees, one of which is in historic preservation. So yes, I found it offensive, Mr. Russo. We spent hours on looking at the Lackawanna plans. I sent everybody on this council a, I normally don't get up here. I tend to work behind the scenes. I think it's, I think it's very important. I have loved this town. I've lived here for, as I said, over 40 years. So looking at what was proposed for Lackawanna, I thought that our HPC did a really good job in the recommendations that we sent to everybody here. As I said, I sent a message to everybody on the board, on the council, rather, and I said, "We have no skin in the game." We are not, meaning the land board, our land board. There are three land boards. As you know, everybody is a volunteer. We do this because we are committed to improving and what is here in our town. So I did find it offensive, and I do want you to know that the people that were acknowledged, again, are the paid consultants.
Hi. My name is Eileen Birmingham. I'm just here quickly, I wanted to say I feel like the communication around Lackawanna Plaza has been very, very unfortunate. I want to thank you both for all the work that you clearly so carefully tried to do. And I'm just here just to say, I think it's very unfortunate that there was a resignation unexpected in the council, and I think the obvious choice is to choose, again, I know nobody expected this, but to choose the person who received the most community-wide votes in the last election, and I believe that that would be Dr. Renee Baskerville. So I just want to put in that plug for her because I think, you know, we don't have another election coming for a couple, a few months, but I think in the interim, you can choose the person who had the most votes in the last election among the community members. Thank you.
Hi. Good morning, council. Renee Baskerville. I'm here because I understood that there might be a discussion today, and my name might be among those names, and certainly you all know that whenever your name is going, possibly going to be among those names, you should be present. I'm here today because I understand that even before I was aware that the seat was going to be vacated by Peter Yakabelis, that some other member, a person that happens to be someone that I'm very close to, had four votes to fill that seat. And I'm here to ask you why. I'm here to ask you, why not me? I think that my track record of service by most people in the township will demonstrate my commitment. I've worked with practically all of you except for Lori, and I tried to work with you because you and I had a relationship where we worked together even before you were elected. So I don't think there's any question in your mind about my dedication, my commitment. You know, all the committees and service that I provided, and I worked well with probably mostly all of you. And so I'm here today to ask, why is it that you wouldn't consider me, in addition to the fact that I was, according to the statistics here, the third-most vote-getter in the township, I've also been known as a peacemaker in this township. NJ Peace Action awarded me the peace action. We are in the midst of a time when people come to these council meetings with anger and angst, and you guys look sad. We didn't have that. Even when we didn't get along and even if we voted differently, we didn't come here dredging that, and we would leave and, you know, go with each other, get a cookie, whatever. But it's a sad time, and I really think that I can be a voice to bring us together across the communities, to bring back the joy. This time of year, we always had healthy harvest, right? I was doing that with our Montclair firefighters. And we weren't, we didn't have to fight then against what was going on in terms of racism and that type of thing. And yes, we have to address these very important matters, but guys, please, I just want you to be able to tell me at the end of the day, I still want to meet with you regardless of the vote, so that I can learn why. What is it that I'm doing that is not allowing you to vote for me? Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment, and thank you, councilwoman, for that. I appreciate that. I just, you know, will say this, you know, first, thank you for everyone for comments. I do want to start first and foremost by thanking Councilman Yakabels for his years of service up here. I think that certainly anyone who chooses to put their name forward and sit up here, put in the hours, put in the work, it's not always easy. We do still go out for some cookies or maybe drinks at times, but, so there is that, but we do have a little fun at times. But it is tough work, and he should be commended for the work that he did on behalf of the community, and I wanted to put that on the record for sure. Certainly, as we talk about filling the position that we have now, I don't think anyone has looked at, you know, there's bad choices here. We are a community filled with just excellent people who potentially could sit up here and do the work and bring value to that, to that work. I think specifically for me, you know, looking at everything, a couple of things do make it pretty straightforward, and I'll answer your question with my action. And what I mean by that is, you know, at this juncture, I so move Roger Terry for the position of council seat.
Second.
It's moved and seconded.
How can you do that? How can you do that without discussion?
Because you make a motion and you speak the motion. So I will speak to my motion, and here's why.
This is another one of those railroad jobs, Mayor.
Okay.
We were going to have a discussion of names.
This is how you have a discussion.
A young woman just spoke that she's interested. I was going to make a nomination of her. Now I can't make a nomination of her?
Well, that is literally how it works. Someone has to make it. I just made one.
Yeah, and I was going to do that, but I was giving you the time to make a comment. This is a totally fraudulent situation.
Thank you for your comments, and you'll have your time to speak.
You're telling me that I can't make a motion for Renee Baskerville, which is what I was going to do, to nominate councilwoman Renee Baskerville, 15-years experience on the council. I had a whole speech ready to make, and you're telling me you've already nominated someone else that you've already pre-decided is going to be the next councilman, a wonderful person who I know and I ran with. But I'm nominating Renee Baskerville for this. Now who you're going to rule is in order.
I'm the chair.
Yes, thank you for seconding me. Out of order. I'm out of order.
It is out of order. So there's a motion. So I will say this to my motion.
Let the public decide.
Fair. I will say this, councilwoman, I'll speak to you specifically.
Incredible.
When I look at it, honestly, one of the biggest things I look at is who was the biggest vote-getter for the position that has currently been vacated. As you know, the next person who ran in the very last election for the position that has become vacant was Mr. Terry. He was the next highest vote-getter for that position. And when that position becomes open, as is often the case, as you see in openings in multiple councils across the state, it is usually the next highest vote-getter for the position that is, it is filled with. That's kind of the standard. Now, there's nuances as to why you deviate from that, and all valid, but that is generally the rule. When I look at it also, much like you, and I thank you for it, somebody who's served on the council before in Roger Terry, right, Councilman Terry, you know, I think that is someone who can hit the ground running, as you would be, right, somebody who can hit the ground running, but he brings that skill as well. And certainly, when I look at his respect in the community as president of the NAACP and leader, longtime elder statesman, I think he brings a lot of the stability and same accolades that, you know, you could prescribe to yourself as you stood up here. So I, again, speaking to you, you know, would say there is nothing to say of, there was a reason why you're not X, Y, or Z. It is literally, for me, a pretty standard course, is the next highest vote-getter for that position. He does bring those other skill sets, which I personally like to see, someone who's served already as we work in an ongoing term, and somebody who is well-respected in the community, as I said, many others would be as well, but certainly being the head of the NAACP and the leadership that he brings there. It is nothing more than that, nothing less than that, right? But I wanted to say that to you directly and clearly, because you asked, and it is not a reflection, you and I have always sat next to each other for years and worked really well to each other, and I think, you know, smile to everyone in this room, because even during the election, you and I have a great relationship and get along really well. So do want to say that to you personally, and yes, you're welcome. You're welcome. With that, it was seconded. Mr. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, again, we've got to get over the personal animus, for goodness sakes here. Somebody doesn't vote the way that somebody wants them to. There's all kinds of things that are being said, and that's not how we play in Montclair. Renee, I have a great deal of respect for you. You and I have worked very well over the years. I value the relationship that we have established and that we continue to, the three years that I've been up here, and you and I are still working well together. As far as I'm concerned, we're going to continue to do that. We were lucky. We were fortunate. We had a lot of very good candidates, quite frankly. And I know you reached out to me in an email. I reached back to you as soon as I could. I was away over the weekend to say, "Do you want to come to the office, have coffee like we've done over the years, to work together again on other things?" I believe Roger is the right choice here. I ran with him in 2020. We've worked well together on police reform issues, quite frankly. He's worked with me with the city of Albuquerque in New Mexico. I have a great deal of respect for Roger. And we, actually, it's not a conflict, and I resent that comment, but this is what I'm talking about, ladies and gentlemen, about the animus that this town is experiencing. If someone doesn't vote the way you want them to, they're a criminal and they're all this other crap. It's not the way we play here. I've never said that, by the way. I've been up here 11 years now. I've never played that game, and I resent it. If I may continue, Mr. Mayor, I believe Mr. Terry, in this instance, was the right choice. We ran together, okay? And that's where I'm coming from now. This has, this has nothing to do at all with my sense of your township commitment, which I know has been great over the years. I mean, I would welcome you up here now in another seat, to be honest with you, not necessarily the center seat, but another seat, but that's where I'm coming from, Dr. Baskerville, and because of our relationship, I want to tell you that. Ms. Loughlin, the same thing. I know your name was put up there as well.
Not that it might affect.
That's all right. Well, that's what you always got to be careful about in politics. You want to, you don't want to be voluntold anything.
Sorry, Charlie.
That's who recommended you.
But that's, that's the issues that, you know, we have faced. I have a great deal of respect for you. This is not personal. This is business, as they say, to me, anyway. Thank you for all your service, and I continue to look forward to working with you over the many years. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time. I spoke a little bit more than I wanted to, but I had to.
Bill, I could appreciate that, and the hint at Renee having another seat up here, I think, didn't go unnoticed. But I have a...
Not necessarily yours, David.
But there's some, there's some, I have some concerns in this process. And one starts with the fact that I like to know when the mayor reached out to Roger
David, I've made a motion. I've spoken my bit. Thank you.
Because when I spoke with Roger two days after, or a day after Mr. Yakabelis, I asked him, "How'd you get into this?" And he told me the mayor reached out to him. I said, "When?" "Recently." I said, "What does recently mean?" So the way that Mr. Yakabelis left disturbed me, because it was after a very important vote. And as I sit up here right now, and we're contemplating, and this isn't against Roger, I've known Roger all my life. I ran with Roger in 2008. I ran with Dr. Baskerville in 2020. I've known him longer than anyone up here. But I'm concerned about this process. You cannot tell me that, and I wish Roger was here to answer the question directly, because at the end of the day, if he was contacted prior to Mr. Yakabelis's resignation, that's wrong, and that needs to be investigated. Because at the end of the day, this council and our behavior, it's not going to change, Bill, and you know that, because there is no trust up here.
I'm not sure, David, I don't want to interrupt you, but why are you centering everything on me? I had no...
Oh, I'm not centering on you.
You are. You've mentioned my name three times in your speech so far. I'm not...
You're a handsome man. I like looking at you.
Well, I'd argue with you if I could. However, I had nothing to do with that. I didn't know Peter was resigning. You never even said goodbye to me.
What I would say is that, right. Well, I didn't say hello either, but I gave you a nice cigar. So our relationship stays intact. So there are questions that all, and they need to be asked and answered. And that's why, because of my relationships, I have nothing against Roger. I think Roger could come up here and do a good job.[1785.11] stays intact. So there are questions that all, that need to be asked and answered. And that's why, because of my relationships, I have nothing against Roger. I think Roger could come up here and do a good job. I just think Renee would do a better job, because she's been at every meeting, commission meetings, as well as committee meetings. She's up on all of the issues, and this isn't, this isn't about personal relationships, okay? It's not. Let's just be honest. Decisions were made prior to anything. This was, this is just a railroad of keeping someone away, that frankly, I've worked with Renee, and it's not always easy. She can be very difficult. As much as she says she's about peace, she's also a fighter, and those fights can get pretty nasty. But I know one thing of anybody up here, including myself, she's dedicated more time to this community than any of us. And she's done the things that you talked about, long-term service. Okay, Roger stepped in at NAACP after Mr. Pellam passed. Same thing with the Montclair African-American Heritage Foundation. He has a track record in this town that does not require anything for him to say that he's not qualified for the position. But the question is, is he qualified more than Dr. Baskerville right now for this council? And it's clearly four people up here believe that, and those four people will say yes to that. But my question is, are there four people willing to talk about how we got here? Because that's what I want to find out. Because for someone to tell me recently, for the mayor not to answer the question of when he reached out to him, I think says a lot. And so that's what you all need to consider moving forward, and what's going to happen with this township. So to Mr. Russo, I did second his nomination, although it was too late for Dr. Baskerville. And I'll be quite honest with you, I told Roger that's what I was going to do, because we have that kind of relationship. So when he steps up on that dais, he knows it's not personal. But he also knows where I stand and where I stand. And it's going to be very interesting to see someone from Montclair who lives in the 4th Ward, is born and bred in this town, and what's he going to put up first? The township of Montclair, or this political BS?
Mayor, I'd like to say something, because then I have to leave. My intention was to nominate councillor Renee Baskerville as soon as possible. David and I discussed how we were going to do this, because we've decided many days ago, right after Peter's resignation, I talked to Renee. Renee asked me to support her. I never heard from Roger Terry, even after calls and emails. Now, who ran with Roger Terry? I ran with Roger Terry. So when people say, well, we ran with him, I ran with him. I got 5,000 votes, he got 4,600. It was Peter Yakabelis that defeated Roger Terry for that second open seat. I retained my seat after 12 years. So I should be for Roger Terry. I love Roger Terry. Roger Terry's my friend. My wife and I helped him during the campaign. He's a good leader for the NAACP. He was a good councilman. He tried to get us a senior center years ago. That's one of the things I liked about him. I'll work with Roger, but I don't like the process. And Renee Baskerville has 15 years' experience, the three years she served as vice president of the Board of Ed when I appointed her in 2004. Then I lost the election to Mr. Remsen. She then was not reappointed by him, a big mistake by him, and then she ran for council and won three terms on the council in the 4th Ward, did an excellent job. When she ran for mayor, she received really the equivalent vote of, of Sean. They tied. But I ran with Sean.
Just to be technical on that, you don't get in a seat without getting more votes, just to be clear.
Yeah, okay, more votes, but when 1,000 votes are not counted, that's something else. Okay. Here's the point. I definitely ran with Roger Terry, so I should be for Roger Terry. When I was mayor, councilwoman Teresa Aurora O'Connor, who ran with me, actually moved. She left. I nominated the person on the other slate who ran against my slate, Joyce Michelson, to be the council replacement. I'm nominating Renee Baskerville, whose slate I ran against. It has nothing to do with political loyalties and all. She is qualified with 15 years' experience, three terms on the council, and a term on the Board of Ed. She's come to almost every meeting since she lost the election. I love Roger, but he's never been here at these meetings. Now, you guys have got to understand, and I apologize to Carmel and whoever else thought I didn't, you know, respect them. I, that was misinterpreted. The point is that I'm up here telling the truth, and I'm nominating Renee Baskerville because she will do a job of bringing more diversity to this council. Look around you, folks. We used to have an African-American clerk sitting here. We used to have an African-American engineer. We have no African-American women or women of color on this council. This is supposed to be the beacon of diversity, the beacon of progressivism, the great democracy, Montclair. We have no African-American or women of color on this council. So that's one of the concerns I had in nominating her. Now, I'm going to leave for a minute, come back. I guess I'll have to vote, and I'm going to have to vote against somebody who I do like. But I'll never get a chance to vote for the person I'm proposing because of the way this is run.
Councilwoman Price Abrams.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and I do want to thank you, Renee, for your longstanding in all the ways people are describing commitment to this town, to your, your passion for this town, and, and all the ways that everyone knows that you are, you know, an essential part of the fabric of this town. And, and so it is also with no, anything but respect and, and, there's no animus. There's nothing remotely like that. You noted that we've known each other for some time before I was serving here and, and when you were. And just, but with that said, as you understand, I'm supporting Roger Terry, and, you know, he's also someone who has given a life of service in this town, and so it's not meant to be a, I'm not making a list and checking it twice as to who, who. It's, it's out of my own set of relationships, because I met Roger during the 2020 campaign, and he has remained a friend and advisor to me since. I, I value and trust the insights that he's helped to bring to me as I've navigated, the, the decisions I've had to make, sitting here, and understanding, you know, all manner of things. And, and I've considered that thoughtful and well-considered advice and guidance, and, you know, in other words, we're entitled to sort of rely upon those people that we consider to be, who would be the asset. And for me, that's one of the factors that I think he brings, just a, a certain nuanced balance and understanding of this community deeply. We all know, I don't have to run through the litany, but, you know, he has been the deputy mayor, he was the deputy police chief, he serves presently the N double A and other, you know, well-respected roles in this town. He stepped up, as noted, after Mr. Pellam passed. He's also been active with the seniors community when there was a more functional seniors advisory committee, and since that time, with the sort of successor private nonprofit, which is the gateway to aging in place. You know, he's been a board member there and has acted. But it's not because I've made a list, and then this list is longer than that list. It's really because, for me, Roger will bring a certain kind of, just in personality, not because he's an African-American man or not an African-American woman. It's really, for me, that's not the primary point. It's the person who I know, who I count on, will give me and this body thoughtful ability to move forward, and for that reason, I support him.
Councilwoman Schlegel.
I just quickly want to say, I apologize to Renee Baskerville, who reached out to me in a very thoughtful and kind and loving email. We've, we've known each other a very long time, and I, and I responded to you to say that last week was one of the worst weeks I had ever, ever spent in the last 15 years on this council, with the Lackawanna Plaza vote, the bombshell that one of our colleagues was leaving, and I was verbally abused in, in an email by one of my fellow council people, who I still am very shaken up to my core of what, what I received. I apologize to you for not responding, and you kindly asked to meet with, with me, and I, and I did it, and, and I'm sorry, Renee. I, this has been very hard for me these past six, eight months. It's really, like somebody said, it's really a struggle to come here some nights. I try to do my best that I can and be balanced and fair, but the attacks on me have been just brutal. I have a heart, and I'm a person, and I'm not here to whine. I said that to you. I don't mean to whine, and, and, you know, I'm my own person, but it's just been really hard, and I'm sorry, Renee. I apologize to you for not responding to you. So I just wanted you to know that publicly.
Thank you. And to that point, councilwoman, I'll simply say this. I think, Mr. Deputy Mayor, you noted it. You know, I, I do have to smile when we hear in the conversation from Councilman Russo, you know, I spoke with my council colleague, I called Dr. Baskerville. That's what you should do. But Mayor, I heard you called someone and spoke, oh my God, it's a scandal. You spoke to somebody, too. You need, listen, the bottom line, I think, as the deputy mayor said, we can disagree on votes, we can disagree on positions, but how we do it matters. And councilwoman, you know, I just want to say, I, I know you've shared a little bit that you've received some of those very, quite frankly, you know, offensive and threatening emails and messages from, from I know a certain colleague who's up here.
I didn't threaten anybody. I just said that her and Lori would each, you can think about it. That's what I said. I'm not hiding behind anything. I didn't, well, why not? You, you want to bring it up. I didn't threaten anyone. I projected a thought that I believe on an email. So that's it.
I would ask this, and I remember when I say there's peace, you've got a councilwoman here who's clearly distraught, who say she's emotionally harmed from your messages. I would ask that you-
The same councilwoman who lied to me in emails as well. So if you want to go down that road, this is not the time to start, because I've got receipts, too.
Okay. So I'll just say this. I think it's important that we respect how someone feels, and just because someone doesn't agree with a vote, it does not constitute or should not follow with a nasty message, nor should it be perceived out there that just because a vote goes a certain way, that someone is a bad person or whatever, they disagree with you. And by the way, sometimes they have more votes, right? Sometimes they don't. That's the nature of a democracy, trying to convince the, the votes to go your way, and you make your case, you make your peace. So I think specifically, we've noted, and, and councilwoman, I thank you for being here and your remarks. I think you've heard from us, those of us who want to speak to you directly. I think you've heard our comments to you. And also, I think, to Roger Terry, who I'm sure is listening as well, heard, he's heard the comments, and certainly why I think we're moving in the direction that we are. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Counselor Cummings?
No.
Deputy Mayor Hurlaub?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
The motion that I made. Excuse me, Clark. Madam Clerk, I walked back in after an emergency call, and I should be given the courtesy of being told what we're voting on. This is discourteous council and government. I'm 76 years old next week. I went through a massive operation. I'm back as strong and better than ever, but you do not respect me. Now, please, tell me what we're voting on.
Bob, it's the motion, it's the motion.
Tell me what we're voting on.
The motion that I made. Madam Clerk?
A motion that you made? What motion? Repeat the motion. Let the public see. Let the sun shine in.
I think everyone has heard it. Madam Clerk, please continue.
Counselor Price Abrams?
What a terrible way to handle things.
We're voting to-
On what?
On Roger Terry being the person we advance, and I vote yes. Counselor Russo?
I hate to do this, but I have to vote no. Not because I'm against Roger, but I'm against this process.
Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Again, thank you to my colleagues for, for meeting to fill this. We look forward to Mr. Terry coming. Thank you all for attending today. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
I'm against adjourning, but go ahead, adjourn.